All right, good evening, everyone. I call this meeting of Hamtramck City Council to order. Today is April 23rd, 7:06 PM. Would you like to call the rules, please?
Uh, Councilman Bushwood?
Yes.
Councilman Alsmieri?
Uh, yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Present.
Councilman Raffai?
Present.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Musa and Councilman Sedman are not present, but we do have a forum.
Thank you.
And I call it, what time did you say we started?
Seven oh six.
Thank you.
Please rise for it. I, the hundred and eighty, should apply of the United States of America and this republic which stands one nation under our guard, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, do we have any community announcement?
Yes. May I ask you a question?
Yeah, I'm trying, it's...
Well, can I start with today's major news of closing out the Garrett versus Hamtramck case after fifty-five years, right? It finally closed today, so that was a big success. I don't know if Ode was present, so if he wants to add a couple more.
I mean, the judge called Jim, uh, a champion of justice for his work on the case. And, um, uh, basically, it was a momentous occasion. She called it a historic event. And, uh, it closed out the case officially. She did mention that it was contentious originally, but when Jim became the attorney on it, that things shifted and they were able to resolve things. And, like she said, fifty-five years is a long time to be in a, uh, this type of settlement agreement without finally crossing the line. And it took a lot of hard work. It's historical in its, in its nature, so it's, it's really amazing. Kudos to Jim for what his, Jim Allen, for his, his great work on that case.
Yeah, thank you.
Also, Mr. Mayor, I have another, uh, lot of things I need to make announcement. Hamtramck Recreation District, they have an event on Kitab Cafe on 27th, two to five PM. I think, uh, you probably can, probably know. Is, uh, the Hamtramck Recreation District plan, they're trying to get some people opinions and whatnot. So, there's a free coffee and everything, two to, uh, two to five, April 27th on Kitab Cafe.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention that, I mean, yes, this is a historic moment. Like, we had, we had the last three houses built last year for a cost of, uh, close to a million dollars. And, and, you know, we're just very proud that the end of this case happened. You know, your, our leadership, after building two hundred units, the last three houses was last year. So, I thank everyone who, you know, was part of this accomplishment and hopefully we don't get any discrimination lawsuits again, you know? And, uh, that's a good news. It should be historic. We should celebrate that too. Thank you. Any more announcements?
Yep, uh, Mayor, I got a couple other ones. Uh, there is a flyer on here for FEMA. Uh, it's posted on here. If you got mold in your basements or such, uh, log on. FEMA is still offering assistance. Uh, the annual health hike is coming up on May 18th at 9:30 AM start. The flyer is also uploaded on here if you want to see that. Um, the Hamtramck Federation of Teachers is hosting, uh, looks like some sort of book fair this Saturday, April 27th, at the Hamtramck Community Center, 11350 Chairist. Apparently, they're giving away, uh, free books to children. Uh, five free books per child if they come out. Um, and the fire chief also has an announcement as well.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, the Hamtramck firefighters are hosting their annual firefighter march and mass on Saturday, May 4th, 2024. Participants from all over Michigan and Ontario, Canada, take part in the event. This year, the procession will start at the fire department at 3:30 PM, travel down Connecticut Joseph Compo, then proceed south down Joseph Compo to Florin Street, where the firefighters will participate in a mass in honor of Saint Florian at Saint Florian's Church. We invite the public to come out and support our firefighters along the procession route and show their support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Since you're still up there.
Yeah, I was just gonna...
Since you're still up there.
We're gonna let him take the first proclamation to you.
Yeah, you wanna read the first proclamation?
All right, so let's move to the proclamations. And the first one is, uh, designating May 4th as the International Firefighters' Day, so...
Was this the mayor's proclamation?
Well, the mayor assigns who would read it, probably. But it's so fitting, right, Mayor?
Uh, you wanna go ahead and read it?
Who are you looking at when you say that? You want me to read it? I'll read it. City of Hamtramck designating March, May 4th, 2024 as International Firefighters' Day. Whereas, International Firefighters' Day is a commemorative occasion observed annually on May 4th. Whereas, the primary purpose of International Firefighters' Day is to honor and commemorate past firefighters who have made the ultimate sacrifice, laying down their lives while bravely serving their communities. Whereas, this day also serves as an opportunity to express deep gratitude and appreciation to all individuals who have dedicated themselves to the noble profession of firefighting, risking their, firefighting, risking their lives to ensure the safety and well-being of others. Let me just note, seven thirteen? Sorry. Thank you, welcome, Mr. Musa, uh, Councilman Musa. Um, whereas, International Firefighters' Day provides a platform to demonstrate unwavering support and appreciation for the courageous men and women who continue to serve as firefighters, displaying selfishness, bravery, and dedication to, in the face of danger. Whereas, observance of International Firefighters' Day fosters a sense of unity, uh, camaraderie, and respect among communities worldwide, acknowledging the invaluable contributions and sacrifices made by firefighters in safeguarding lives, property, and the environment. Therefore, let it be proclaimed that May 4th shall be recognized and honored as International Firefighters' Day, a day dedicated to honoring the memory of fallen firefighters, expressing gratitude to all who served and demonstrating unwavering support for those who continue to serve on the front lines of firefighting.
Thank you. The next one is the public recognition of firefighter awards ceremony.
Uh, the Hamtramck firefighters recently held its annual award ceremony. So, our firefighters are recognized for actions that went above and beyond their normal duties as firefighters. The actions of these firefighters resulted in the rescuing of four fire victims from structured fires. Overall, there were eight life-saving awards and ten unit citations awarded. Uh, as I read your names, I'd like these gentlemen to step in the room behind me or stand up. Come, line up here. Uh, Captain Mike Crandall was awarded a unit citation. Captain Mike Wagonchutes was awarded a unit citation. Lieutenant Andrew Legchak was awarded a unit citation and a life-saving award. Motor engineer Corsi was awarded a life-saving award. Motor engineer Mancino was awarded a unit citation and a life-saving award. Motor engineer Jason Abbey was awarded a unit citation. Firefighter Mark Motel was awarded a unit citation. Firefighter Chris Monge was awarded a unit citation. Firefighter Chad Kirsten was awarded two unit citations and a life-saving award. Firefighter John Kudjuski was awarded a life-saving award. Firefighter Brooke Bolter was awarded a life-saving award. Firefighter Nathan Sherron was awarded a unit citation and a life-saving award. And probationary firefighter Justin Embry was awarded a life-saving award. We thank these firefighters for going above and beyond. Would you gentlemen care to take a picture with the guests? Yeah. Can't have them all doing these. Get the, get the bricks out. Am I ready in the center, gentlemen?
Yeah.
Coming in with us, I guess.
Short people here.
What are you doing?
All right, what camera are we looking at first?
Oh, Max.
Oh, no, come on right in here, councilman. It's good.
All right, everybody look at Max.
Say cheese.
Cheese or chiefs?
Fire.
Cheeseburger.
I got some good ones.
All right.
Camera, take one.
Break one and shake one.
Thank you.
Is the next one the, uh...
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Present the next one here.
Do you wanna introduce yourself, then I'll start with the presentation?
All right, so the next item is Hamtramck High School Prevention.
Hey, good evening. My name is Shannon Schaefer. I work with the Hamtramck Drug-Free Community Coalition. I know that that's a long name. So, for short, we say HDSCC. We actually have a little logo that you might have seen before. It's on my pin here. And my coworker, Laura Gerdwood, who is the executive director of the Hamtramck Drug-Free Community Coalition, again, HDSCC, will be giving you a pin for you to wear as well. And I just wanted to give a quick introduction as to who we are. We are somewhat of a sponsor for the student group that is about to speak to you shortly and give you a presentation. So, we, our program, the HDSCC, is a program of a nonprofit that's right on Joseph Compo. And our focus is on substance use prevention as well as just the general promotion of health and well-being of our community members. So, I just wanna emphasize before the students start that, yes, we are a bit of a sponsor for this team, but we had absolutely no say in what was going into this presentation. This was entirely student-led. And we have just been kind of cheering them on as they move forward with their initiatives. And I have been incredibly privileged to work specifically with this group. And, again, they're putting this content together themselves. We did not really have a part in this. So, without further ado, and that was just a little introduction I wanted to make, but I would like to now introduce our Hamtramck High School group called the Substance Abuse Prevention Committee, who's going to give a quick presentation.
You guys wanna introduce yourselves? Just state your names on the microphone, and then I'll start the presentation.
Uh, my name is Emma Stiefagel, and I go to Hamtramck High School.
My name's Sarah Hong, and I go to Hamtramck High School.
I'm Shayk Jemah. I also go to Hamtramck High School.
My name is Farhana Bigel, and I'm also a sophomore at Hamtramck High School.
Good evening. My name is Yeday Barab. Uh, I'm a junior in Hamtramck High School. So, I'll start. So, we are a committee focused on addressing one of the most pressing issues facing our society today. It's obviously substance abuse. From the concerning rise in vaping among our youth, substance abuse affects young people across Hamtramck. Our aim is to find ways to prevent, intervene, and support against substance abuse in our community by using what we know together. And we want to make our community safer and healthier for everyone.
So, the picture shows a bunch of bays that were collected near Hamtramck High School. There were, uh, there were a total of eighty bays were collected in a few blocks of Hamtramck High School. We were shocked to see so much vape going on in our community. Uh, this image, this depicts liquid, uh, tobacco and marijuana stores across Hamtramck, where individual of certain ages may be able to purchase, like alcohol, bays, without age verification. Some of those stores are also popular hanging out for students.
Why should we care? In just two square miles, Hamtramck is home to eighty-four establishments that regularly expose young children to products such as e-cigarettes, tobacco, vapes, and marijuana. It won't take long for these children to obtain these products, whether they're in their neighborhood or at school. So, why should we care? Well, the next generation of Hamtramck's leaders will be children. And those who start vaping at an early age run the risk of developing lung diseases, asthma, cardiovascular diseases, and more. Um, nicotine use also has the potential to develop a chronic addiction. Children frequently use nicotine as a coping mechanism and when they're worried. But this will simply encourage them to use it more. Nicotine has been linked to problems with the brain development. We must not let the youth fall victim to these harmful substances. Our youth are questionable, and our city contains all these shops, which only makes it easier for them to obtain these products. And these will negatively affect their health forever. If we want to protect the youth from using vapes, tobacco, e-cigarettes, marijuana, and more, we must act now.
Presenting our findings and recommendations to the council, our proposals are aimed at, eh, reducing the sale of substances to minors and applying preventative measures to help protect the youth. These recommendations include enhanced enforcement of regulations, advocate for stricter enforcement of laws prohibiting the sale of tobacco and vaping products to minors. This could involve giving penalties to establishments found to be violating these laws, retail licensing requirements, creating rules for shops that sell tobacco and vaping products. These rules would include mandatory training for staff on how to check IDs and make sure customers are old enough, and on how to sell these products responsibly. Community-based prevention programs. Implementing programs that are focused on educating and engaging youth to prevent substance abuse. And youth outreach and supportive services. Providing resources to young people that are affected by substance abuse, such as counseling and supporting groups.
Thus, we can see that drug prevention is a vital component in creating a healthy and prosperous community. By enforcing stricter laws and requirements, prioritizing education about drug abuse, and establishing support services, we can address the causes of substance abuse and encourage youths in our community to make better choices. All these require collaboration between lawmakers, educators, healthcare providers, and community members. Can we count on you to help us build a drug-free community by enhancing enforcement of regulation, reviewing retail licensing requirements, expanding community-based prevention programs, and encouraging youth outreach and supportive services that can make a positive impact in the town?
And that's all from the presentation. I'm not sure if you have any questions?
That was a good presentation. There's something else you are missing in this presentation. They, you know, narcotics, you prescribe drugs. It's a major issue too. We see people, young people like you from shop in doctors' clinics, asking for drugs. You know, some of them, they use them to study, which you don't wanna know, like, either of this stuff to keep you focused. Actually, you need to study without those. You know, some people start college from fresh year, freshman year, and they, they want some aid to keep them focused. So, we see this in clinics. It's a major issue. A lot of people are, they buy them in the street. Uh, I just saw a young person, just graduated from high school, admitted for using ten tablets of, of Norco a day, which is, you know, that's, that's beyond what any person can handle. It's allowed every six hours. He's using it, you know, almost every two hours. So, that's a major issue. So, we had to send him to Spikes and Clinic so he can, so he can get some programs to help him withdraw from this safety. So, thank you so much. That's an important topic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next one is certificates of appreciation to the citizen patrol members.
Are they, are they here?
Yeah. As everybody known, our city, uh, of Hamtramck, we have, uh, citizen patrols who are residents of the city of Hamtramck who patrol the city of Hamtramck. They, uh, they put their time, effort, and their money patrolling the city, making sure the city is safe. Uh, you know, the least thing, you know, from our council mayor we could do is show appreciation for their work. Uh, this is the only body that has been showing volunteers and for their services that they have done. Uh, we have a couple, uh, members of the Hamtramck Citizen Patrol who are here today. And, um, I would like you, Mayor, and all of us council members to, uh, to present these to these volunteers, uh, citizen patrols.
So, City of Hamtramck, uh, certificate of appreciation, Citizen Patrol, uh, the City of Hamtramck thanks you for your hard work and dedication, which contributes to the overall success of the community. And we have several members here. We have Khalid Najeeh. We have...
Is Khalid here? He's not here, too.
He's not. And we have Habib Al-Jofi. Will come up here and, and take a picture with you as well. We have Saif Haddash. And we have Walid Ayash. We have Yusuf Sareef. And we have Mohammed Najeeh and Hizam Najeeh. Uh, we can go up here and hand it to them.
Let's just take a picture, I guess, and you guys can... Just do it over there.
Thank you so much. We also have Adnan Jomba, who's not here, but he's gonna be awarded one. So, we have, uh, this one, uh... Mohammed Najeeh?
Uh, Hizam Najeeh.
Hizam Najeeh. Yusuf Sareef. Walid Ayash. Saif Haddash. Al-Jofi.
He's not here.
He's not, okay. So, all right, so, you guys, would you...
I got some good pictures, all right.
Thank you for your service. Thank you so much. The last item is the parking business update. My, uh... So, the parking business went live in August 2019, but that was for a trial period, uh, where they were testing the system and, uh, their, uh, equipment. Two hundred ninety-two meter spaces were monitored by meters of parking stick. About thirty-three safety sticks, uh, are monitoring the no-parking zone. Since going live, uh, this is what I could find, uh, that in September 2021, it was live. Uh, four hundred thousand plus parking sessions have been processed. Contract is for an initial period of five years with a renewal of another five years. Uh, we have about a year left, uh, so we'll have to confirm that. I couldn't find the actual, exact contract. As for the contract, the city shares the revenue generated by MPS at fifty percent each. So, whatever, uh, we collect, half of it is, uh, given to MPS, and the other half is for the city, from which some of the expenses are paid. Before implementing the MPS system, the city was collecting about seven thousand per month as parking revenue. Uh, since February 2022, the average monthly revenue for the city has been about thirty-four, out of which, the city deducts all the expenses and nets about twenty-three thousand, uh, from the overall revenue. Uh, so, since the MPS system has started working with the city, the city is making more money compared to what it was making before the system went into operations.
That's it?
Okay.
Question.
Yeah.
So, you cannot find the contract?
No, no, contract is probably with the clerk's office. I didn't have the time to look for it. But the ones that I did find, uh, there were several contracts. There were amendments to the contracts. You know, so the actual date, I'm trying to figure out which is the date from which we can start counting the five years.
Okay, well, we have one more year's left. So, you have to talk to the clerk office. We have the final contract. Next council meeting, please link to us, update that.
But it's not, the contract doesn't start over after an amendment, so it doesn't matter. It was amended twice. It doesn't start over.
They still need the final...
I understand.
I'm just talking to the city attorney for a second. What was the question?
About the...
What is the...
What is the contract, sir?
When, when is the contract starts and ends, the actual...
It's a five-year contract. We have about a year and some change left. I can get, I can get you the final date if you want it, but it's roughly a year.
The contract, it's on board docs. It's on, it's on board docs. Every amendment is on board docs.
We have, we have an original signed contract, and we have two amendments.
Okay, so all three of them, you have to see...
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll look at it.
We have, we have all three of them, a hundred percent.
That's all we need to know.
Uh, Max did ask me to look into the contract situation and the termination of it. I think it is about a year and a half, and...
We, we literally just did this.
Yeah, and I, I gave them instructions of how to make sure that, uh, we don't renew it, if that's what you guys wanna do.
We're, we're on top of it. I just don't have the exact date off the top of my head. I know it's a year and some change.
Well, another question. The, lot of the contract will be there in the board doc, I believe.
I'm sorry, councilman, anyways.
The contract hard copies, it cannot be in the board doc. It's gonna be a confidential thing in the city.
Uh, all, all contracts are public knowledge. You don't hide...
Okay, well, if there are four, then you can give to...
It's, it's, sure.
Yeah, sure.
The clerk has our, our hard copies.
Yeah, as you have the hard copy.
The clerk's office has our hard copies. Whatever hard copies we have, the clerk's office has. But the, the scanned copies are on board docs as well. So, I mean, if someone wanted to do a search on board docs, there are copies on board docs. But, um, I also have copies that we keep in the city manager's office and the clerk's office as well.
Of course.
We, we have, we have duplicate.
I know, I was able to obtain a copy during the election. I was reading, and I knew that contract. But what I'm not sure about is, I know the first six months was totally, completely for the, the years. And till February of 2022, when we started getting fifty-fifty. So, I don't know, I'm not sure if that's accurate when you say one year left. Because if we started implementing that, you know, a few months before I took the office...
It's effective July 1st, 2020. There you go.
It's five, it's five years from the original.
It's right there.
They start a good line.
Okay.
A good line.
July 1st, 2020.
Yeah, they take six months from...
So, basically, they started counting before they implemented, from the time they installed it.
Well, the time they installed it was August 2019.
The contract was signed, and then they installed, and, and then eventually they went into effect. So, I mean, whatever, whatever the start of the contract, whatever we signed it, I, I... Is that the signed final version?
The amendment says effective date, so July 1st is the date. It's not the signed date, July 1st.
But they start effective the contract from July.
July 1st.
2020.
There you go.
So, how come the first six months was for them and expired in February 2022?
I know one of the amendments, uh, extended, they got a few more months, was all for them. That was one of the terms that, um, it was agreed to. I, I'd have to look at the terms. I don't remember all the, all of the particulars. But I know they got a couple more months of funds to, to get some things that the city wanted.
All right, then, okay. So, that's the... So, we can terminate that, or, you know, change the terms in favor of their residents.
Well, we, we definitely will be in a much more stronger position at the end of this contract, considering all the equipment will be in place. And they will be without a contract. I seriously doubt they're going to wanna pull all their equipment out and just leave.
I think we'll have to read the contract to see what are the terms and conditions of termination. Uh, whether the equipment needs to be taken out? What, what needs to be done on that?
Well, like I said, our, our city attorney is...
Attorney, I think, you're gonna do that.
We, we just...
So, when you also have the opportunity, there's, there's also an opportunity to make, if you wanted to renew the contract, you could do a yearly contract even this time. Say, okay, we'll do it for a year. and say, okay, we'll do it for a year, we'll try it this way, whatever you want, or we could terminate it. Yeah, there's probably some terms for taking away the equipment or swapping it out, but it's not gonna be on, on the city to do that, certainly.
We'll, we'll be in a very strong position at this point. We were not in a strong position when they arrived.
Yeah, we want utilize it in, in our favor.
Okay, so maximum you get, max out twenty-three thousand dollars?
Depends on the revenue and the tickets.
Okay, max out twenty-three?
Yeah.
Okay, because the contract first came in as an experimental. A lot of people not, was not here. Then it was council vote in favor of that. I was here, I would recognize that. So, it's, it's a two times already been amended. Did agree, disagree, a lot of contradiction was there. So, of course, I will discuss about this next council meeting. So, by that time, I promise you, city managers are prepared for all the language, what is there, and we will follow up from there.
Anything else? Alright, so, we move to the next section. Do you have any additions or additions to the agenda?
Mr. Chair.
Okay.
How's another fact?
I would like to remove from new business, Resolution 2024-46, and that's E from the agenda. Second.
Okay, approving resolution to complain against Mr. Jazak Suna for violation in city court. So, all in favor?
Aye.
No objections?
No.
Alright, so, he has been removed, and I guess the reason is because it was resolved already and only to discuss it. If, if something happens, we can bring it back.
Even if the charter is... Even if the charter and...
But I did resolve it, so they decided to, they just made a decision. Based upon a result.
Councilman Hassan goes.
Hassan down, is it removed?
Is it removed? Is it removed?
It was put on the agenda.
So, go ahead, the next one.
Alright.
Even if the charter says it has to be on?
I think it would.
Okay.
Yeah, so, alright, council voted to remove, but alright, so we move to the public input.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yusuf Andalda, three minutes.
Yeah. Good evening, very welcome. Okay, so, I mean, we woke up this morning, like every day, and there's a red sticker in front of my door, that said, do not act in. I don't know why. We live in the house for over twenty-five years. I have no idea why that happened, so it's my dad's house. There's seven of us lives in it. My dad came downstairs today to ask what's going on with this. They said that we're leasing, we're renting it. We are not renting it, and the lady actually told him that he's probably gonna get a ticket, two hundred, two fifty to three hundred dollar ticket, because we did not tell the city that we're leasing the house. There's seven of us on it. We're not leasing the house. We're not leasing the home, it's our home. We're not leasing it. So, I don't know what's going on with that.
Okay, so, sometimes...
We never had a problem like that before.
I noticed a few problems, like there's a few complaints happened before where someone would just guess that this is rented without evidence.
You wanna control my ID that they still live in it?
No.
Bueno, bueno, say you.
No, we are just saying the employees, sometimes they guess without having enough evidence. So, we need this to be addressed by the city manager. I would, you know, refer you to him. He will take care of that.
Mayor, if I may, it's generally not a guess. I mean, we, we use evidence to determine whether or not, so I mean, we'll look into it and determine what the case is. So, it could be that the, it's not in someone's name. It could, I mean, it could be any variable reasons, lying. So, it might be that they have to do something, you know. I mean, it could be something on their end that they gotta fix. So, but we'll figure it out. It's not, it's not the end of the world.
So, if this is something that's rented, you just show them some evidence and...
Who owns the house?
My dad.
Can we move on to the next public comment?
Yes.
Okay, Faouzi, Alberia?
Wa alaikum. Wa alaikum.
Before you translate, I'd like Max to hear you translate, please.
I can't say.
He's gonna translate what he said, but I want Max to hear the translation.
Max?
Just to clarify, we were okay with the...
Okay, Max, just get their address and their information. Try to see what their issue is.
Give him your telephone.
Three, one, three, seven, seven, five, one, eight, nine, zero, zero.
Which is...
Two, four, seven, five, fifteen.
Mr. Mayor, he spoke his comment. Can he sit down, so that you guys can discuss it? Because the time is...
Yeah, fine, I'll translate your comment. English on a, at the... So, Mr. City Manager, this gentleman right here just expressed that he came, asking to change his fence, the front yard fence, from metal to wood, I think, just like his neighbors, and they refused to give him a permit for that, saying that it was made like this in the past, so it's not allowed to change it. Is, is there a reason why, if you would, I mean?
I don't know.
I can speak to that.
Huh?
I can speak to that.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Johnny.
The, the city ordinance states that you can't have a fence in your front yard greater than twenty-eight inches tall. It would have to be a chain link one that's visible to go through. You're allowed six foot up to the face of the house. At the face of the house, it can drop down to four feet, run down the sides at four foot. And then at the front, the way the code, the way the ordinance is wrote, it's twenty-eight inches. So, there's been a lot of non-conforming use of fences. If you go to do the whole fence, we, we wouldn't be able to allow it. They do it as a repair in sections, which is considered twenty percent or less. You can replace the way it is, because it's considered a repair. As soon as you go new, the ordinance doesn't allow it. So, we do get some people to come in to want fences in their front yard, but to the ordinance, I have to deny it.
So, his neighbors would have fence that's only twenty-eight inch?
They, they probably have taller ones, neither, they did it up years ago, twenty years ago, and it's just sitting there, or it was done on a weekend, we don't know. I can't go by what a neighbor has or what a neighbor did. I just gotta go with what they, when they come in to apply. So, I can't justify giving somebody a permit just because a neighbor has it.
But, but is that, I mean, you're giving violation for minor stuff to people for something broken here or there. How come someone have a fence that's against the ordinance, and you keep it there just because it was made, needed and not?
No, we, we tag them, especially through the rentals, and as we find them, we go through the record to see if a permit was voted, and we do cite them. So, it just, we haven't found them all.
Alright, so, Councilman Hassan, it's where we're working about a resolution that would allow double fencing, I don't know if that...
A double fencing on the back.
Double fencing.
Yeah, this is a front, front yard fencing.
So, what they're talking about, this front yard is pretty standard, and I've actually, long ago, had to go, basically, what the, what this gentleman needs to do is, he needs to file for a variance with zoning to try to see if he can approve it. And he can say, look, there's other houses near me that have the same thing. I just want the same thing, and then the zoning board can approve it or not. The same thing with the people that he, they're, sometimes they take a people for a fence, and the right move that they would do, if they want to keep the fence, go to the zoning board, ask them for a variance, so there is, there is a process for him.
There's issues relating to the type of fence, because if you put a solid fence, and you have a driveway next to it, and somebody backs out of the scenario of the driveway, they're gonna run kids over. So, the fence ordinance, there needs to be a little bit of work done. They should clip the corners so people backing up don't run kids over. There's a few things that have to be addressed. I actually started working on the fence ordinance already.
Okay, alright, so...
Mr. Chair, can I ask for his phone number, so we can explain to him? Press your comment.
Well, you don't want to say that.
Well, could you do your comment, well?
Nine, one, seven?
That, that's clear. Okay, just carry on to the next one, please.
Yes.
Mr. Bill Meyer?
Bill Meyer from Hamtramck. Nice to be here. I just want to say how wonderful this meeting made me feel already, with all the wonderful honors to the people who are beautiful in this city. I do want to hope that you wouldn't even begin to consider renewing the parking meter contract with that company at all. Because this report, the very brief report, obviously stated the benefits of getting another few thousand dollars a month, but they don't list all the negatives.
That's right.
How many, how much did we lose because companies, businesses lost business? Add that up, I'm sure that's a few thousand. And how about all the people who get tickets, like, two weeks later in the mail, that they didn't know anything about the meetings, they know how they run or whatever, still haven't learned? Or how about the people who don't even want to come to Hamtramck anymore because of those meters? How many people have told me that? I don't even shop there anymore. Our city is ruined by those parking meters. We have to never renew with this company. I hope you all feel that way, but anyways, I did send you all a link recently about a wonderful video I discovered on YouTube about a gentleman who came from outside town. He's a world traveler. He came to Hamtramck and did an interview with people on the street. I was questioning at the beginning what he was gonna do, and it ended up being one of the greatest videos I've ever seen about Hamtramck. This promotes Hamtramck like you all feel, and it's beautiful, and I sent you all a link. It's, um...
I see it.
I forget what it's called, but Mahid saw it, and he interviews people on the streets, even the mayor's in the video, he probably didn't know he was in it. But everyone is treated with such respect, and they were all beautiful, all nationalities here, talking about how they love this city and how beautiful it is, how unique it is, how different from the rest of the world, and how special we are. And I know that, because that's why I came to Hamtramck and moved here in the States a lot these years, this, this is a unique city, and we're all working so well together right now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bill. Wow. No extra minute, and you didn't even use your full three minutes?
I wasn't even gonna talk.
That's it, Republicans.
Alright, thank you. Alright, so, we move to the constant agenda, and this is approved for the single motion. We have no discussion. We have item A, approval of minutes from March twenty-six, 2024, regular city council meeting. Approval of home voice register, date ending April twenty-third, 2024. Approval of pre-approved expenditure, date ending April twenty-two, 2024. Resolution 2024-40, approving removal and appointment to board and commissions. Resolution 2024-41, approving request for street closure for St. Florian Strawberry Festival.
Motion?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
No objections?
No.
Mayor, can I suspend the bills, please? We need to vote on approving the amended agenda. We removed E, but we have to vote on approving the amended agenda. Can I get a motion?
Motion?
Thank you.
Good catch, Rana.
And then, is everybody in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Amdi Tahir is here.
Okay. Camera, supporting.
Repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Amdi Tahir.
Do soundly swear.
Do sound swear.
That I will support?
Do I support?
The Constitution?
The Constitution.
Of the United States of America?
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution?
And the Constitution.
Of the state of Michigan?
Of the state of Michigan.
And I will faithfully discharge?
And I faithfully discharge?
The duties of?
The duties of?
Planning Commission?
Planning Commission.
Of the city of Hamtramck?
Of the city of Hamtramck.
According to?
According to?
The best of my ability.
The best of my ability.
Congratulations.
So, it included removal of two board members who never attended meetings for the past year. That was the reason. What is John doing?
He's, he's the first in new business, so I just keep him. Just keeping us rolling.
So, we move to a new business. We have item A, 2024-42, approving grant agreement with the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, EGLE, Finance Division, State, and the City of Hamtramck.
Motion?
Second.
Mr. Mayor, this is a grant approval. Got John here to talk about it, more free money.
Yeah, this is, this is no match, so this is a hundred percent covered. Fifteen million, thirty-five thousand. This will do the water main replacement along Goodson from Lumpkin Street to Joseph Campo. It'll do along Cashmere Street from Joseph Campo to Connet, along Comar Avenue to Joseph Campo Avenue to Connet, along Comstock Street from Gallagher Street to Connet, along Poland Street from Lumpkin to De Quinder, and Belmont Street from Connet to Elpino, quite a bit. And it's also gonna include just about three hundred lead service lines.
So, this is one, one of the big ones?
This is from, from you.
You just stopped proving it, okay? So, it's, it's...
This will start probably late summer, early fall.
Alright, any discussion?
No, sir.
Alright, let's vote on it.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Al Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2024-42 approved.
Thank you. Next one is Resolution 2024-43, accepting financially distressed cities, villages, and township grants, FDCVTY 2024.
Motion?
Mr. Mayor, I got the fire chief back to talk about this one, another grant.
Uh, yeah, like, like John's grant, this is a, there's no match for this one. It's a hundred percent all money. What this grant will enable us to do is purchase twelve sets of firefighting gear, coat and pants, four self-potented breathing apparatus, eight spare bottles, and ten masks. What this represents is what the next two years we would be budgeting for our PPE replacement cycle. So, this is gonna free up some funds to allow us to replace some of our old equipment. And what this is gonna do is get us on track to having our, our firefighters having a hundred percent compliant gear.
Sure. Alright, thank you.
Vote?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Councilman V, yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Al Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Hassan? Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2024-43 approved.
Three more.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next one is Resolution 2024-44, approving timeline for NEZ zone.
Motion?
Second.
Mr. Mayor, I have Ms. Faulkner here to talk about this. Our staff, including our city attorney, including Councilman Rafai, and everyone has been working very hard on this one. As you know, this is the, the one to promote building residential homes and giving tax breaks in our community, and it is a timeline to do just that. I have Ms. Faulkner here to speak a little bit more on it than I can.
So, basically, this is just a timeline based on the advice of the attorney and based on the state regulations in terms of next steps. This outlines how and when different things would need to happen. We do have to have sixty days of notice, so we can't, you know, we couldn't adopt anything today. I mean, by law, you have to have sixty days of notice, so this is just outlining that timeline.
It's a really complicated process, actually. Carolyn's done a really, really good job at trying to figure this thing out and unpack it. So, basically, as she said, we're following the guidelines by the state. We're gonna do a tax abatement for fifteen years, and Rana's sending out the notice required, that she's gotta send that out to all the taxing authorities. So, we're going through the process, and you take a look at the...
There was a publication in the paper on Friday, that was required.
Right.
Rana's sending a letter this Thursday or Friday, that's required. It's very detailed.
And then, yeah, sorting out, they had done a great job sorting out which areas are gonna be part of this abatement. There's a certain amount that you can have, you can't go over this, you know, the amount. They did a great job. Conrad as well, actually, is out, and Rana.
Kind of been all hands on deck with our staff on this one, including our city attorney, so...
So, there'd be a public hearing on May twenty-eighth, and that's where people from the community could come and basically voice their opinions on it.
But not vote?
But we can't vote on the twenty-eighth.
It's just a public hearing?
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilman Rafai? As we all know, that, you know, there's members of, you know, our residents who are trying to stay in the city of Hamtramck. And, but, you know, unfortunately, our city is not showing support or helping these individuals who wants to build houses in our city. As much people want to move to our city, but there's no help. So there's some that has built a mile away from Detroit because Detroit showed, you know, there's a tax abatement. So I was able to, you know, try to bring something, even though I did a lot of homework on this, and still couldn't understand as much than she, you know, did her homework. Conrad, a whole team really worked hard on this. And this is now, just my show, all of us have worked, and all of us here in city council, mayor, you know, wanted to have something for the residents. This is the effort of all of us here. I'm glad that we are going through this process, and we're able to go, you know, have more residents continue living in the city of Hamtramck and also y'all to make Hamtramck a beautiful city.
But that's not...
So I want to thank all of you guys for the hard work and also council mayor.
Thank you. All right. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
All right, further than...
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2024-44 approved.
Thank you. The next one is resolution 2024-145A, approving first reading and setting date for second reading and public hearing of the amendment and proposed ordinance to chapter ninety-six, foreclosed vacant or abandoned property.
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, this is council's wish to remove the property, undeveloped property from the ordinance. Our city attorney took a crack at it, and I'll let him speak further.
Yeah, basically, we're trying to do what you guys wanted. We're removing the lots. It's just the, the buildings that are vacant that we're targeting now, and we're sticking with the same, uh, we're sticking with the same amounts, but it's just for the vacant properties. I know council will get asked for it to change for two years further, and you can still do that if you want, but this is sort of what we came up with as a compromise for everybody to try to get you guys.
Mr. Chair? Okay, go ahead, man. I have only one question. By us passing this resolution, all this ordinance, there is no lawsuit behind this that we're forcing people to pay for their private, it's considered their property. So they could do, they could rent it, they can leave it the way it is. So because I was reading something, and I want to be, you know, we have to be really careful that we are allowed to do this. We're able to...
We're removing undeveloped property from this altogether. So this is only dealing with developed property, vacant buildings at this point.
It has to have ownership and...
We, you're not wrong. We were, we were toeing the line previously, so this would, and I think, you know, I think that we could have withstood any lawsuit, but at this point, the way we're changing it, it's, there's nothing there for anybody. Because it's, as you said, just developed property, vacant, actually vacant buildings.
I mean, it's end of the day, councilman. We could get sued for anything and everything. I mean, frankly, cities do, you know? So I'd rather get sued for something that's, in my opinion, forwarding our city, pushing it forward in a good way, you know, especially when we have dilapidated buildings around town with delinquent landlords and owners doing nothing to them. So, to me, that's a good cause.
Yeah, that was my question.
I'm fine with it. Yes, we have to make sure that we don't, you know, sue it easy. I know there's, there's anybody too, but it's not like it's an open door level, you know, you can get sued easily by us forcing this, so...
We are, we are sort of toeing the line, but I don't think, I don't think we're crossing the line.
Sounds good.
Well, the sense are happy, Mr. Mayor, about what I say, that because many people came in, just pick up themselves and just pick up. They're trying out to swing to charge them money for empty lot, and with moving this, you know, for sake of... The reason I was asking for timelines, but I was not sure, we need to completely remove it, but I think this has been better than completely removed.
Perfect.
But we still can encourage people to utilize their land, you know, or whatever. But I have a quick question, this, many people pay their fee already, some did not, they did like, they deny or came here and, you know, speak, and we told them, hold on to it. How do you address this?
I don't think we can necessarily issue refunds at this point.
There was an ordinance that they had to pay into at the time.
I mean, there's a law.
It was a past ordinance, so they had to pay the fee until it was changed, and now no fees collected. It's not like we collected it without the ordinance saying we had to collect it.
Yeah, but there's some people, you know, that even been passed, they didn't pay it because they came here and this bid.
We, we could. I think we could reverse it, actually. So I talked to Conrad briefly. I don't think this would, so these aren't, so that's why, again, why we're not crossing into the threshold that you mentioned, because we aren't, these aren't taxes. They weren't going into the tax. It was just the general fund. So at this point, I think we can reverse them technically if you wanted to do that. We would have to, I might have to, I'd have to think about it. So if you guys want to push this till the next meeting, and I have to just make sure...
Well, it is, it's the first reading.
Yeah, it's something else.
We could do that as something else. He's right.
Just like this.
So do this one, and then I'll, I'll figure that out for the next meeting.
Sure. All right.
Well, just want to even rip off the board, you know? It's not that people have come in and complained, and we take care of them, and people are nice.
Because last year, when we passed this ordinance, they got confused. When we come the ordinance, just forbade for the building, but faked, not the faked lot.
Right.
That's why we need to move the faked lot in the same way.
I don't think there's really all that many.
Yeah, they have confused.
Big a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you get faked lot, live the same way. We were...
Tax, that tax, maybe that's a true...
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Hassan?
This is the one always been there. In the back-end building, somebody had to wash it, so this is nothing wrong.
Yes.
This is the one that's supposed to be right here.
I mean, we did beef it up, but...
But it's all of the council's idea, building. Who don't know, nobody knows who is the building. This is the, we know this is the guy on this building. That's all.
All right.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2024-145A. I'm sorry, it's forty-five A, shouldn't be one forty-five, approved.
All right. All right, so with that, we come to the end of the new business. We move to the report. So my report, which not much to say, but I want to take this opportunity to send my condolences to Councilman Sedman for the loss of his, his father. Sorry to hear about that. We haven't spoken to him, but we will after the meeting, and we'll talk to him and show some support. Now must be a very hard time for him, especially that his father is in Bangladesh, right?
Yes.
Yeah, that's very difficult for him. The other thing is, I also want to take this opportunity and mention the loss of a very famous scholar in Yemen, Sheikh Abir, and then he's known worldwide, and there would be a gathering in Miller Mosque after the meeting to, you know, to show support to his family who are here, and whoever has time, we can go and say, you know, show some support to the family. With that, also, I want to mention the complaints that I've been getting. We already talked about some of them. There has been some more often contact with the residents by the code enforcement for minor stuff, and it's very annoying to us. Some of them are, like I mentioned, sending violation to the wrong address. That pisses a lot of residents off, so sometimes they come to me to the clinic and show me, which I don't know what to do. I end up sending them here. Some of them, those are the ones I get in contact, and I know, I know them well, but I know there's many more that I don't know. So we need to be careful about that, and, and like we said, we passed a resolution to give warning for first violation before given, you know, actual violation. Some people, they express that they don't receive warning. That's another thing. We have to be careful about that, too. If it's the first violation, it has to be a warning, especially if it's a minor one, and it doesn't show a clear negligence. We have to be, we have to tolerate some minor unintentional stuff. You know, we don't want to give our residents hard time, because sometimes we want them to tolerate our mistakes, and some of them will express, you know, look at the alley. You want me to make my house and backyard perfect, but look at the alley. Why don't you fix your part? Which is true. We don't have the resources to do our part, so we have to be a little bit, you know, careful about that. Residents are getting angry, and that's not a good thing for us. We need to help them. We need to serve them. We want them to be compliant, but in a, in a way that doesn't make them feel unwelcome in the city. Minor violations should be given warning first. Sometimes, you know, I mean, if you can avoid something that can't be fixed easily, just drop a warning. I mean, I don't have, we are not making money from the code enforcement, like we mentioned earlier, so why punishing the residents with a lot of violation for minor stuff? That, and the other day, when a gentleman came, and I was with the city manager, showing he paid for a violation for a parking ticket that's, that's not his car. There's one letter difference between his license plate and the person who made the violation, and after he paid, they printed the car. He looked at it, he was like, that's not my car, that's not my license plate. Why did you send me the violation? They said, we made a mistake, sorry. So then we want the residents to tolerate our mistakes, but we are being very strict about code enforcement and building department and parking enforcement and all this. So we want the people to stay in our city. I mean, a lot of them in public, in the social media today saying, do you want us to leave the city? We will. We don't want them to leave the city. We want to welcome them. We want them to feel safe and welcome to the city. They already suffer enough from tax, from high, you know, property value assessment, and we don't know how to explain that to them when they talk to us, but hopefully, we will have some solution down the road. That's all for me, and we move to the mayor's pro temp report.
Good evening. First, the Lord Michael Blair goes to the councilman's father, who just passed yesterday, Sadman, Motada Sadman. His father is a good friend of mine and my relative also.
His father is your friend?
It is a real, really young guy. He's fifty-two years old, fifty-three years old, passed through in Bangladesh. I was with Sadman yesterday most of the time, keep him down. Please keep him in your dua, on your prayer. And finally, I heard a lot of complaints. I had one complaint coming to myself, people coming to me. They pay their taxes, but after two, three years later, our tax department sends them like three hundred dollars, four hundred dollars, left you to pay those things. He don't have any concern about this. He don't even know. Why he sent this, why we send them after three years later? Why don't send them immediately? He has balance left due to those things. Please, people are very upset about those things. We need to be, our tax department correcting taxes, then we can be more careful. And after three years later, you say, oh, bring the proof. How many people keep the proof three, four years? And when they pay the cash, it's not a, it's no way to get it. Some people pay the check. Could be has some clue to probate, but a lot of people, they pay cashes there, and after three, four years later, you say, you did not pay those bill. It is very unfortunate for the people. People are very angry about this issue. And I, last time, last council meeting, I asked, train you to code, let them do their job, but let them know they'll finish their job on the, on the time, like eight to six o'clock, not at evening time, or not at nighttime, or not wicket time. It is people with a concern. Is our neighboring city does those things? No, not Detroit, not another city. So it is that we are pressuring people somehow. People are very upset. We need to keep their anger down, and mayor already mentioned it, they are very upset about their taxes. I had an empty lot. My taxes, I bought like seven months, seven years ago. It was two hundred and fifty dollars taxes. I never, nothing changed, only just keep it clean. My taxes now is five hundred dollars. I have to ask them, how is it going to come up? That much each year, it's raising the taxes. And lastly, last, February fourteenth, we are, we are invited to join a party. Mayor also, they are the chief guest, myself and our colleague also, they are, it's a wonderful party. Enjoy after eat party. And all those, after a long time, it is almost four weeks later, we were meeting. I miss a lot of people, we don't see a lot of people. Again, everyone has a ID number from me and city council, city of Hamtramck. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I forgot to mention that party. Thank you for the invitation. It was a great party, you know, bringing the community together in Warren. I, I spoke there, in Troy. I spoke there, and I told them, because everybody was speaking Bengali, that it's very difficult language to learn, therefore, I need four more years to learn the Bengali, so another term, so I can speak in Bengali during the event. So the next report is city council.
Mr. Mayor, one more thing to add you some, sorry to hell. We raised, we lived in the community, even Hamtramck, Detroit, Warren. Last week, we lost our community kid, nineteen-years-old kid in Warren. Police shoot and kill him. Lot of things gossip going behind, but I'm not an investor, investigator, or I'm not a very professional, professional about this incident, but in my opinion, lot of options, they keep it in, leave behind, they shoot him and kill him. So I hope our parents, our, all the kids, and everybody's alive of those things, and we like to take care of our kids, teach them, and let them engage with the kids. How come they have a gun, and how come their community situation? Please, keep our kids, stay away from the drugs, and stay to time, quality time with the case. You can find out what's going on, and I'm sorry for their loss.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, councilman...
I'm sorry. So I don't want it to be a complaining session, but something I just want to mention, a few people mentioned it to me, about the police department. When our cops stop people for any incidents, whatever, they may be making mistake, but the way they treat them, this has been unfortunate. I think our police department needs a training for customer service. I would recommend next to come up with something to train people properly and behave, you know, if you don't behave to people. I know police officer has right to be rude, but small incidents happen, don't talk to people like they're nothing, you know, just beg them. They are taxpayer people, and, you know, they feel really, then, many times, they mention it to me, not one or two, like more than two, but many, almost every month. I can't so keep it down. I try to explain to people, but since, you know, my last case here and my city manager, I think with some sort of training we need out of this part.
If I may, if, we're not aware of it, because we have everything recorded, so please tap into all, and, you know, at least then we can look into it to see if they're rude, and a lot of times, somebody does come in, and it's not exactly how it was, you know, being told, but we definitely would like to see that because we can address it. And we don't know if they, you know, go to you or anything else, please, you know, they they can email me, call me, anything we need to do, so then we can pull up, 'cause everything's recorded.
Thank you.
So we can look at the recording, and then we address it, right? If there is an issue, it'll be addressed immediately, but we can't, you know, if they're ready, I don't know how many tickets a day or whatever else, there, there's impossible for us to know every interaction. So please, feel free to reach out to me, reach out to the front desk, and we'll immediately look into it, look at the recording, and if there is a problem, it will be addressed immediately.
Thank you. Councilman, um, keep in mind, there's always two sides to a story.
Definitely.
And, and the officers are very acutely aware that they're being recorded. So it's very silly for them to be rude, um, because they know darn well that they're gonna get disciplined if, you know, they get a complaint on them. So, um, quite often than not, we find that when we look that up, that's not the case. So, um, please, if someone says that, encourage them to come in, and please, you know, give the officer, uh, benefit of the doubt, and just tell them, go make complaint, so we can look into it.
We'll be above board, though, if there is an issue, I promise you, it'll get addressed, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Rafai.
I wanna thank all the residents who showed up here today. And then I wanna give my sincere condolences to, uh, councilman Sedman for his, uh, the loss of his father. It's hard to lose a father. You know, I lost my father when I was sixteen years old, so I know how it feels. And also, uh, I lost a cousin of mine, Wednesday, also, so it's, it's really hard, you know, especially a father. Second, uh, you know, this is only, uh, mayor and council who does show, uh, appreciation to volunteers who do volunteer in our city. Uh, the reason I did this, so we could, uh, you know, show them appreciation, and also get more people to get involved in our city. No other administration, or mayor, or council previously has, you know, showed them, you know, and thanked them for their, uh, for their time and effort, uh, they have been doing for the city. So I wanna thank all those who do volunteer for the city of Hamdrami and continue to volunteer. Thank you, everybody, for being here, and have a good night.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Hassan, go ahead.
So, the, the front side of the fencing is the John is right. If somebody too high, if, if we cannot see, some criminal can hide over there, it's both dangerous for the peristrain and the household. So we are working on back from, like Tony said, if somebody need, it has to be clear fence if you wanna hide, and, and has to have the variance. The parking meter, it was from the, some elected official blessing to happen, what you guys seeing that? So twenty-three thousand is my coffee money, I feel, I do, I believe. And, and city, twenty-three thousand, uh, like Bill Meyer said, I agree with him. For twenty-three thousand, we are losing maybe two hundred and thirty thousand. Why? The customer don't wanna come anymore, and I had to come. Mr. Mayor, I mean, manager, hey, what is this, what is this, what is this? He's losing his time, I'm losing my time, and we have a mental piece is disrupting, and all those, only for twenty-three thousand. So if we don't have this one, we have a customer come, more customer come, more comfortable, more city will get more tax. So of course, our elected official, it's up to us to renew or not renewing the, the, the parking meter things. Um, second, the violation, uh, Max helping a lot, there are some mistake, uh, violation for the, uh, code enforcement. He are, he fixing a lot. But also, uh, the code enforcement officers, maybe John or Max has to give them direction. A ordinance was passed. It was the first you see under the record of that house, this year, you see the first violation, you have to give the notice, not write where, write the ticket. So there is the address missing ticket, wrong address ticket, that's why we brought back here also address. So should not be wrong address ticket anymore, because whatever you want, city, I already did it, why I still getting wrong address ticket to my house? So all those things, uh, we have to, I have to see clearly. And again, I have a one, uh, two day, I'm gonna give to Max, uh, the first warning with the ticket. The guy already cleaned it, don't give him time. He give the ticket like Tuesday or Wednesday, the guy had the work, he has to have the set out this Sunday, give the three days. So that kinds of situation, again and again, city administration has to talk to code enforcement and, and, and the record and first, uh, ticket. Shooting thing happen is very pathetic. New York City has a, one Bengali, um, die, and everybody was thinking police was right. Finally, police officer and police department say, sorry, that means they made a mistake. They're not all the time right. So we have to work together, but, uh, the training you talking about, Mr. Councilman, after we have lost, lost established over hundred thousand, we had all the officer has to go through diversity training, and Michigan State mandate them, they already have the training. New officers, maybe they need, they have, and, um, um, in charge, police chief, is very, uh, I appreciate, he took leadership and answered the question, what he was looking for. Is the both-sided story, sometime we do something wrong, blaming the police, but it maybe is not right. Okay, so, or sometimes they do have some attitude, we have to change it. So, uh, Warren shooting, uh, not just experience, why I'm talking here, to us also have experience. Nine-one-one call was recorded, my brother crazily assaulting us, he did not sleep four days. So if any human don't sleep four days, he's the sick person, no question. The police officer was there, maybe did not, uh, uh, proceed with the nine-one-one call-related, maybe they did proceed the terrorist side or the other side, not deal with the, with the, like a sick person, how we should deal. So it is one from mistake, there's a lot of thing going on, and we don't want that kinds of situation in our city. Of course, I see the police activities more than before, and all over I see that, that's the good thing. That's the good thing, and, um, after that, nothing, uh, balance, budget already been balanced now. And long time, sixteen years I'm here, I used to see negative, 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 predicting, predicting, coming, coming. So one thing I expect from, uh, finance director, the, after three month, we don't have to come, I have to adjust the balance again, I hope it not. If you have to do it, it's okay, but it, it, there's something expectation. And, yeah, everybody doing good job, thank you.
Yes, I like to thank you for everyone, they came today, all my community. And, uh, and I have for the big leader in Yemen, they passed away, Sheikh Abdul Magid al-Zandani. I'm sorry for that one. You know, my friend, Mahd- uh, Mahdassin Sedman, his father, he passed away, I'm sorry for that one. And I get some complaint for the service line, for young people, they working in, uh, in Roosevelt, like two month. After when he work, they go two, three block alley, two, three block street. When they work the other street, like to, uh, after Roosevelt, they, they repay the street. At Roosevelt, they keep it tight, they don't, they don't clean it, and they don't fix it. Why they go from this street and another three, four block? When they do the service line, they start work other block, and they keep that one like it. They don't keep it clean, and they don't fix it. They fix three, four block, France and Brown Road and other block, and now they start in Alpha Line, and they keep, uh, Alpha Line, they keep, uh, clean, and they gonna fix it, and Roosevelt, two month ago, they still same way. And Roosevelt, very important. A lot of people, they go in the podium and, uh, go to school, and the, the street is bad. Should be when they fix the service line, this, uh, street, after the hour, they keep it clean same way, and they cut one road, leave open another road. We keep call every day, a lot of, a lot of complaint from the resident. Another thing, people they working at nighttime, I don't hear the hour people over twenty years. People, they make a lot of ticket for parking or for anything, so how, the house in a nighttime. We didn't, we need to stop this issue. We didn't need to have a lot of confuse, only just this years and the last years. Why they kept that one, I don't know. For people they working, parking ticket, and the code enforcement in nighttime.
Nighttime.
Nighttime. Nighttime, uh, should be at daytime, it's okay. But at nighttime, who has a ticket like six, seven years, or ten years ago for ticket at nighttime? Who has this? I need one resident from five years, not two years. Who has a people a ticket for a nighttime?
We should stop it.
Who else are coming to hours and they go?
nighttime. We need to stop this issue, a lot of confuse, they coming back to ask the council. Everybody, they gets call, why this and this and this? We need to stop this issue.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do you have a report for the controller, or?
It's posted.
It's, all right, that's fine. Did you manage anything?
I just added it on there, 'cause I had the month report on there.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so we move to the public comment.
Mr. Bill Meyer.
Okay.
We pass, no public comments.
Oh, okay.
What? Don't?
Please, please.
What?
Motion to close?
Actually, um, we don't have a closed session, if you're wanting to.
I won't make you know it.
Excited, guys.
I give a motion to begin closed session.
I motion, second.